Okay, it's seven o'clock. So let's call this board work session of the Silver Falls School District to order. Any attendance?
No.
Okay. First item on the agenda is introduction of our Budget Committee applicants. And we'll go in order here. So first up is Kurt Metzger. Come on up and... We've got three minutes, and then we can ask you a few questions.
Okay.
All right.
So I've worked with all of you except for Jonathan in the past years. I had three children that have gone through this school system through Victor Point and through the high school. And one of them's out of college in accounting, and one that's in pharmacy school, and my third one that's out of high school is at Schmeckada. Then I have one that's a junior in high school, and one in eighth grade at Victor Point still. I guess I've volunteered in the past on different committees. The Budget Committee was one that I was on previously. Was on the Site Council at Victor Point, and was on Long Range Planning Facility Task Force a few years back. I guess I... In my current position, I do set up budgets. A lot of the sales I do for the Northwest and Western Canada for a vegetable seed company. And so I travel a lot and then do a lot of budget, and meeting budgets and changing budgets and whatnot. So I kind of understand the budget side. Although the Silver Falls District has a lot more money that you're dealing with. I have a bachelor's degree in science from South Dakota State University. I have a small hobby farm. We have 71 acres, and we were raising berries up until last year, but now we're into grass seed for production. I guess I would like to be... Throw myself out there for the Budget Committee again. I appreciate working in the school district and staying connected with what's going on and seeing how our schools help our children. And you know, we just want to see each one of the kids thrive, and I know their goal is 100% graduation. And anything I can do there to help, I'd like to do it. Any questions?
Okay, very good. Anybody have any questions for Kurt?
I don't.
Yeah.
I want to say thank you, because this is...
Oh, yes.
You've served for two years, right? Or two terms.
Two terms, yes.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah. Thanks, Kurt.
For the record, my name is Patricia O'Sullivan. You can call me Patty O. I had four children that also that went to the Silverton School District starting back when I moved here in 1975, until the last one graduated in 1989, I believe. They were a bit infamous, so don't hold that against me if you knew any of the Klingel kids. Because I recognize a lot of names, and I'm not sure who's married to you, but... Don't hold it against me. I try my best.
You all do.
I moved away after the kids all graduated. They all went on to college and graduated from college in various things: teachers, acupuncturists, whatever they are. And I moved away because I thought, well, what am I doing here? You know, I'm not Little League coach anymore, blah, blah, blah. And so I lived up in Portland for a long time, Lake of Swego. And recently, I just decided in the last three or four years that I needed to move back to my roots. Although I came from California, I feel like Silverton's kind of my home. And I needed to move back to my roots. Unfortunately, I got sick the year I moved back, and so I've been a little bit out of commission for a while. But now that I'm well again, and thinking about what I want to do, I do work part-time. I'm a government relations person, which means I'm a lobbyist. Don't move. And I have, in my past, been a lobbyist for Portland Public Schools for four years and for five different state agencies. I've done a lot of lobbying, but that doesn't mean that's all you do. When you lobby, you kill bills or help pass bills and try to talk people into these things. But it also is very intricately tied up with budgets. So I was a lobbyist for the Department of Human Services, an $18 billion budget, 12,000 employees. So that's kind of the biggest. I also volunteered on the Lake of Swego Water Board, which was kind of tiny, and you know, that was kind of the littlest budget work I ever did. But I've done everything in between. I think I overcompensated on my answering my questions on what this Budget Committee really does when I get into my policy head. So you'll have to excuse some of those answers of, well, I go and lobby the legislature to do this and do that, and you know. But I do have a lot of ideas that, you know, that might be able to help the school district think of some budget issues in a different way. My experience with Portland Public Schools was very, very interesting. As you know, they're the big dog in Oregon, and they have a lot of unique little budgeting things they do because nobody ever questions them. So that doesn't mean that we couldn't try things like that. So yeah, I'm really glad to be here. I'm glad to see names I recognize, and I feel really good about coming to the school district and helping the school district that I was too busy to do things like that. So when I was raising four kids by myself. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you for offering the application.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is John Fronz.
Hi. I'm John Fronz. I live... I appreciate the opportunity to be part of the Budget Committee. I've lived in Silver Falls for the last sixteen years, and I currently have four kids in the district: two at the high school, one at middle school, and one at Robert Frost. They've benefited from excellent teachers and staff, and also have taken advantage of many additional programs offered, including family books at elementary level and at middle school, and then just a slew of activities at the high school. My son Andrew, for example, is a junior. He's in Wentzville Hallmark Team Band, choir, theater, ASV, one crew, FBLA, as well as being a junior sport athlete in cross country, swim team, and track. He's really making most of his high school experience. It's really because of this excellent education experience that my kids have had that I've applied for Budget Committee, volunteering for this position. I feel like it's a way that I can kind of give back for the experience that they've had and do my small part in a small way, make sure that the next generation has the same opportunities as they come through the school district. I've, over the last decade or so, I've managed the finances of a small consulting firm as well as am currently the treasurer of a small education-focused nonprofit, Silver Friends Music. In my day job, I'm an information technology manager. As part of that, most of that job entails analyzing and solving difficult problems. And much of my career in that field has focused on user support, and both for employees in my companies and for customers, there's a certain amount of empathy and understanding that's required working with users with computer problems. They're often very frustrated, and working with them to come to, you know, acceptable solutions. So, in other words, I work well with others, and I'm open and try to listen to other people's opinions and understand them. Yeah, and so, again, I just wanted to thank you for the time and the opportunity.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for John?
Thanks for applying.
Yeah, thanks, John. Appreciate it. Okay. Melissa Scott Briggs can't be here tonight. Oh, Mrs. Seifer, Melissa Seifer Briggs can't be here tonight. She had a scheduling conflict. So we'll move on to Karen Garch.
Well, we only get one person signed up here. Well, thank you for the opportunity. On social media, I saw that there were three openings and had no idea who was applying, and I said, well, I want to help out. My husband and I moved here two years ago. We lived on five acres for 17 years, and Silverton is wonderful. It's got a sense of community that we haven't had before. And one of the reasons we settled here is because we were on the Putting Over Water Shed Council, which is, as you know, is centered here. I've been in education pretty much my whole life. Started out with kindergarten when I found out they wouldn't... They weren't going to teach us to read. Oh, no! I thought that's why I was going to school. And I continued on through a PhD in Curriculum and Instruction at the University of Wisconsin. My dissertation was studying a French sociologist of education called Pierre Bourdieu. I had a master's in French, so my thesis advisor said, could you read those books? And I said, sure, I'd be happy to. And then I moved to Oregon and spent eight years as a field representative for the Oregon Federation of Teachers. And mostly, the AFT at that time represented classified employees. So obviously, worked with, managed some of the streaks, negotiated contracts, reviewed their budget, et cetera. And then I was Executive Director of the Oregon Community College Association and worked with a 16-member board. Did a lot of lobbying for community colleges. That was my primary function. And then my final 13 years of employment, I was Executive Director of the Oregon State Bar. I had 90 employees, multimillion-dollar budget, and the last thing I did was build a new bar center, which is the funnest thing I think I've ever done in my life. But I'm here to just help out in the community, and I would be happy to answer any questions to you.
Anybody have any questions? Nope. Okay.
Thanks for applying.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Jacob Klopelter.
Good evening. My name is Jacob Klopelter. Thanks for having me here tonight. I have been a member of the Budget Committee for one term, so for three years now. I've enjoyed participating in that process. It's always an interesting process. I do have a son, a fifth grader at Robert Frost, and I feel like that kind of keeps me relatively involved in his education. I work for Marion County in the finance department. We maintain a $450 million budget with about 100 capital improvement projects mixed in there. So we're responsible. I personally handle procurement and purchasing. So as a department, we manage and track and maintain that budget, and it's a year-long, full-time job for us. So I'm sure you can imagine that I'm fully invested, full-time, in budget and budget processes. So that's all I got. I'll keep it short. Any questions for me?
All right. Anybody have any questions?
Nope, but thank you for serving and applying again.
Sure. Thanks for having me.
Okay, thanks. And last up is Peter Metzger.
He's signed up today.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, you're on that one.
Well, good evening, and I wrote some things down, but I rewrote those down, and you can hear those responses in front of you. So I'll try not to read too much off what I put down from my notes, but I just want to thank you for taking the time this evening. I know we have a full schedule ahead. But to get to the question, why do I want to be on the Budget Committee? And I answered that, but I'll just kind of reiterate it. I'm at a time in my life where I think I can start giving back to the community. My daughter, who's a sophomore at Silverton High School, my son's a fifth grader at Robert Frost, and my wife, who's a teacher at Robert Frost, and myself are pretty well-established now in our careers. We moved back to Silverton 11 years ago. We moved back jobless because we wanted to live in Silverton, and we were going to put our careers second, community first. So through that kind of transformation, we found ourselves, have our feet firmly planted on the ground, and feel it's time to give back. The Parent Teacher Club President at Robert Frost, my son's a fifth grader, so he'll be graduating. I will be retiring. I've done that for three years, and continuing the journey. So really looking forward to that and appreciate everything that Silver Falls School District has given to my children, and myself too. But I guess the real question is, why do you want me on the committee? I mean, I'd love to be on it, but I have to serve a purpose. So in my application, I kind of indicated there, I'm professionally trained forest engineer, academic researcher, professor of forest operations, financial analysis in the natural resource field. That was the first 15 years. 10 years ago, when we relocated to Silverton, I had kind of a career change. Still stayed in academia in a way and education, but went into more of the outreach and youth education, working with a state agency, the Oregon Forest Resources Institute, that does youth education, community outreach, and now working for OSU Extension as an outreach extension agent at the College of Forestry. Really has kind of brought some insightfulness to just, you know, what it takes to engage a community and be involved. And that's also kind of spurred me on to want to continue with my efforts, such as Robert Frost and the Parent Teacher Club. So I like to say, what advantage do I have? Well, what they put here, I'm good with numbers, and I appreciate education. That's to summarize it in a quick nutshell. I've worked on lots of budgets, some as small as the PTC budget of $10,000 to $20,000, some as large as over $1 million, when I worked for a private timber company as a senior manager. On that, I never touched a budget. We had 10 accountants that did everything. But my job in all those cases is really making sure the budget is feasible. It meets the objectives. I work with a lot of federal grants, state dollars, county dollars, and it all comes in, and all has certain requirements. So that's where my budget area really comes in: feasibility optimization. So, thanks a lot.
Okay. You bet. Anybody have questions for Peter?
No, I better say thank you.
There you go. Thanks, Peter. Yeah. Yeah, thanks, everybody. It's really nice to have a face and a voice with your applications, for sure.
And you're all well-qualified, so thank you.
Yes, for sure. Okay, so moving on. Next item is, we got some review of data points for helping to define educational equity. Anybody's got some?
I'm going to ask Jennifer to come out and assist with this as well. I mean, it's fair to say. And so your objective, one of your goals for the year, actually sub-goal, is to help yourself better understand and define educational equity in this school district and what that means. And one of the strategies that you asked me to initiate was giving you an opportunity to make some comparisons of data that demonstrates where we're doing fairly well and demonstrates that we have opportunity for growth. And so with that said, I took either your goals or indicators directly from your strategic plan. And tonight, we have some data points in the area of attendance, in the area of academic achievement, and in the area of graduation. And if you think for a second about each one of those, in a school district our size with 13 schools, right, and nearly 4,000 students, again, the analogy comes to mind. So I just want you to understand that the purpose of this evening, at least that's my purpose of being here with Jennifer as well, is to help create some talking points and discussion points for you to better, from a board standpoint, come up with that definition or statement of equity, belief statements, in whatever it is that you as a board make a decision on, or you don't, prior to the end of the year. So I'm hopeful this conversation will nurture that and help move along. So you have some data in front of you, and I'm going to ask you to refer to those, and we can spend as much or as little time on each of these as possible, as you prefer. Some is familiar to many of you, and some leave a brand name. And actually, I'll bring that up here in just a moment, because I just really have one website that I want to visit, and specific to a pretty cool tool that we have related to use of data from the WESD dashboard. So if you take a look at the packet, you have some bar graphs, which indicate not only our total graduation rate, but our subgroup rate by a variety of groups over the last, actually, seven or eight years. We don't have current 2018 data at this point yet. We actually have some rough data that's been submitted to the Department of Education, but it doesn't become authentic and certified or whatever until ODE releases it, which I understand is going to be later this fall. But there's one chart on the front, total of all students, which many of you have seen in the past. It's great information, but it gives clear indication about how we're doing from a total graduation standpoint. And by the way, this is total of all students or a four-year graduation. And if you consider each year, the five-year cohort graduation is generally higher. And you'll see, actually, when Jennifer shares her information a little bit later, that'll be specific to the five-year cohort, because part of that task was finding out who didn't graduate and what we know about those kids over the last few years. You'll see the performance indicators for migrants and limited English. I will share with you that we're talking about smaller groups and smaller sample sizes. You generally have more peaks and valleys, right? So while there are definitely some peaks and valleys on there, if you take a look at the growth over time, it's clearly going in the direction that you as a school board would want.
Andy, can you...
Sure, go ahead.
Just a quick question about the migrant subgroup. Was there just data not kept until 2013?
It's state-reported data, and that's when it was reported by the state of Oregon. So this is all mined from state of Oregon.
Right. Right.
And do we know what the definition of migrant is?
Our migrant students are generally those students who are... Come from a transitional family, generally agriculturally or forestry-based, and have a tendency to live in a community for, I believe the standard is less than a year, do you recall? And then move on.
They have to move within three years.
Within three years.
Yeah. They can stay migrant for up to three years.
Right, but a lot of people move... But my question is, what specifically qualifies you as a migrant? That's, I guess, what...
Agricultural work and fishing.
Fishing, forestry data, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, yeah, those are occupationally driven and...
Occupationally driven.
And largely lots of it's self-reported as well, based on registration.
Okay, okay. So it's a self-report. It's not a metric that's derived from other criteria?
No, I believe so, yeah. It's what we get from the folks.
Got it. Thank you.
We also have an economically disadvantaged subgroup, and this all comes off the metric from the ODE website. We put it into the bar graph. Special education as well. And you can tell that I'm focusing a little bit more on where we're doing well. I think I could capture each of these by saying, this is where we're doing well and continue to do well. The last one being the CTE participants, which has only been tracked by the Department of Education the last couple of years. And again, plenty of indication that Silver Falls continues to do very well in that.
So yeah, we should probably take a moment to celebrate that Silver Falls is doing better than the state on every single graph.
Right. Thank you, Jennifer.
You're welcome.
So we have a great resource through the WESD. And it's called the WESD Toolbox or Data Dashboard, and...
Oregon Data Switch.
Now.
It's an evolving name.
And this is incredibly complex and a system that is just full of incredible information. And as the name indicates, as the dashboard, it provides dashboard information literally at your fingertips. How often is this updated, Jennifer?
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours. And so we can drill down and filter this by school, district data. We can even drill it down to specifics such as race, gender, a variety of things that specifically focus on all those subgroups that we really want to take a look at. Now, I think it's also fair to share with you, while this may be new, and this presentation style or this platform may be new, review of this kind of data is not new, especially to principals. And we look at it district-wide as well, but we expect our principals in a very firm fashion to be reviewing this data. And frankly, over the course of the last few years, have made some great gains, especially when we consider the academic review using our STAR assessment data, which is our formative assessment for elementary schools in the district. So with all of that said, this is great information. Again, I think each of you can easily ask lots of questions about any of these particular data points, but remind yourself of the objective, and that is to give you talking points specifically to where we're doing well and where we could use some improvements. So I'm going to refer to your hard copies here in just a moment, and I need to be, by the way, very careful about moving through this, because this is live information, and if I clicked on the wrong button, we could have student names and things like that displayed up there. So I just want to share that with you at a time. So you have a couple of documents in front of you that, again, indicate, I think, some areas of growth, but also, generally speaking, some good information. You've got a variety of attendance documents, and if you take a look at the right side of each document, we put on there which body they refer to. So we have attendance percent by special population for students in grades K through eight. And if you take a look at the bottom, this would be, by the way, for the 1718 school year as a compilation. You have breakdown in attendance by students on 504s, ESL students, English as a second language, limited English proficient students, migrant students, special education students, and TAG students. Keep in mind that the overall attendance area, excuse me, attendance for Silver Falls for last year district-wide, or excuse me, elementary, was around 94%. And so you can see references there, that we have some groups, few groups that are clearly, but slightly, operating slightly lower than the average in the district, and a couple of groups operating higher.
And just to clarify, because some other people might have a question, the difference between ESL and LEP, I'm assuming, is that LEP is all of our students who are limited English proficient, but some families choose to decline services, and that's who's going to ESL class? Is that the difference between those two?
Yes and no. Very few of our parents opt out of ESL services, but the limited English proficient are those students who are, I believe, newly identified, Jennifer, and truly are limited English. Where ESL, English as a second language, students are... I may be destroying this, Jennifer. You may have to help me in this. But are more advanced and have... Are getting closer to exiting the program. We have students who exit the program after a number of years, and if they demonstrate their proficiency...
This is what they're now calling Ever ELO.
So those are students who no longer...
They put someone in this report, I believe, as the Ever ELO, which is part of our problem tracking longitudinal data, is that they changed the identification, both the names of it and who qualifies for what.
So those are the exited students.
Yes.
Got it.
Or on watch.
Monitoring.
Yeah.
That we monitor for four years now, so...
So I'm going to draw your attention to the next page, which is just attendance percent by criteria race. And I think sometimes there are some assumptions made, and that's another thing to take away for you, is that taking a look at data should just be just that, an observation of data and see if they take some documented takeaways. But sometimes people would think that certain subgroups or even certain populations would have poorer attendance than others. And I'm just going to draw your attention to a couple here. Again, well, the elementary attendance was around 94%. If you take a look at our... With very few, about African-American attendance is higher than the average. Asian is higher. Hispanic is about the same, but just under 94% as it is for our white population. And our lowest being Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander at 88. We have a handful of those.
I was going to say, it's a small population.
District-wide. Again, just the message there is, look at the data, because many times it dispels myths or information that may otherwise be accurate.
All with a couple percent.
The next page being specific to the attendance. And the next page is, we moved from attendance into academics, again, keeping to the K/8 level. And this one's always quite telling, and I'm not so certain that this has really ever changed, but that's an indication of our female gender being of higher performance, generally speaking, than our male students over time. And this is indicative at the elementary level. It's also indicative later in some of the documents at the high school level. By the way, each one of these documents is a little bit similar to the ones in the By the way, each one of the shades are listed in the legend above. Specific to the state assessment, Smarter Balance assessment, this one happens to be specific to English language. You have similar comparisons in English language, ours with Smarter Balance, again, by the breakdown of race that we have in the school district. You'll see some interesting variations there. And again, you can see the sample size on the right. You know, this is largely a white student school district, 1,535 at the elementary level, to the smallest being native Hawaiian Pacific Islanders at five. Those are measured, those are tracked. But they, so the larger your sample size, right, the more reliable that is for you to be able to review and make some assumptions specific here. By special population, similarly, as you viewed just a little while ago, again, the breakdown of Smarter Balance, again, elementary only, in 17, 18, tag, special ed, migrant, LEP, and ESL kids. And there's a sheet there as well. Again, we're relying upon some of the conversation that you've had. The next one is specific to schools within the district. We do, this platform allows us to track that as well. And while our principals, again, largely focus on site-specific information, sometimes it can be a little misleading if we focus specifically on a building. Again, when we talk about buildings that have different grade configurations and they have much larger populations than others, I think the variables there are worth noting and so it's difficult to make the comparisons. However, I also think that it's telling to see where some of the strengths that we have and where some of the patterns are that we have in this school district based upon the origin of the students. We see differences with things such as adapt academics, but we also see differences with things such as attendance and participation in a variety of activities within the school that's partially based upon the school community. It could be based upon the culture. As an example, generally speaking, our Beet Creek School, which has the highest Russian population in the school district, generally has some more challenges related to higher attendance, simply because within their culture, within their religion, they have a number of absences, making it sometimes challenging to track that. Then moving right along, we have it by grade level. So you can see beginning in the third grade, oh, it does include the 11th grade on this one as well, so it's not just elementary. And you can see some interesting trends there. And actually, we've seen this one in the past as well, and that is, you know, the older, the students higher the grade, oftentimes we see an increase in performance, right? And we see some of that indicated here, with students being at the mean or exceeded mark higher proportion.
Is this false? I mean, obviously, there's more.
So, you know, I'll dwell on these and speak about these or ask Jennifer to chime in as well if you have any questions specific to any of these. There are lots of great takeaways from here, and you can identify the takeaways in a positive way, keeping in mind that first chart of information that I gave you regarding the graduation rates in our school district, while you don't have comparisons here to other schools, we can surely capture that if you had an interest in comparing our results to other school districts. We even have that capacity compared to other school districts of similar SES, which I think is a very telling comparison many times, because we can surely compare ourselves to other school districts that have 20,000-plus people and like ours is, but by removing, by not considering the socioeconomic status or level, I think we're not doing ourselves a favor. That's really quite telling for any school district comparison. And the next set of pages are specific to the high school. You can see some notable changes in there and one that's more specifically concerning to us, but maybe not too out of the norm. If you ever take a look at the page that says attendance by grade level, grades nine through 12, and the third page in, if you've ever heard the term senioritis, that's probably indicative of that mark chart, with our freshmen last year being the 94%. Again, just at the average of our school district, but our seniors dropping to 91%. Keep in mind, though, that our, especially our seniors and seniors, which are oftentimes, who are oftentimes more active in activities and other things, some of our seniors have work release. I mean, there are a variety of variables in it that contribute to that.
And remember that they count as an absence if it's an absence because they went to a basketball playoff game or something. And the missing instruction, even if it's a school-related absence, counts against their attendance rates.
Interesting.
So our high school's going to be built in.
That's an interesting point, if we consider that against the goals of 100% attendance.
Yeah, that's important, too.
Because it seemingly enforces the idea that it's not possible.
Right.
We can filter out in our own internal system, school-related absences and just look at non-school-related absences, and that number changes significantly. But as far as ODE is concerned, any loss of instruction is an absence. So if they're leaving early because they have a golf or a sport or FBLA or speech or children's theater, when they, you know, leave to go for state, that's an absence.
Interesting. Essentially the same indicators there at the high school level. Sometimes the best thing to do is just to take information like this and to go home, chew on a little bit, and see what comes to mind. But, you know, the objective that you've charged me with, or what I understand that you've charged me with, is helping to help you come up with those things, not specifically for the purpose of putting data or talking points within your statement, even though I suppose you'd consider that, but to give you a real picture of what equity means in Silver Falls school district, because that definition, that statement's going to be different than what it may look like in, say, all regular departments or other school
Andy, did you want to talk about this one?
This one.
Okay.
Yeah. So when you guys put this together, did anything jump out at you? I mean, you probably were already aware of any trends that were in here. Nonetheless, is there anything that stood out to you that you want to throw out there towards us? I mean, I had a chance to look at it, I think it's great data, thank you for sending it out in advance.
Sure. Yeah, what stood out for me, Jonathan, was more specific to, whatever, for earlier with the, with what people may believe. As an example, our subgroup populations, Latino, even our economically disadvantaged kids, migrant kids have very good attendance, right? They, A, come to school, and I think that's a value here. And I can't make a reference to other schools or other school districts, but I can say here that there are things like attendance and their desire to learn and to grow are indicative of some of their results. Another one being, I mentioned migrant students earlier, we've had a few years now where our migrant students have graduated at 100% in this school district, which is not always the case. You take a look at state data and you don't see that, oftentimes, simply because of the mobility of our migrant students. So that's telling to me from this information as well. And so one of the takeaways that I have from multiple points is all of our kids, I think, generally speaking, like coming to school, there's a feeling of welcomeness, there's a feeling of safety, and there's a cultural reflection on that. And I think that's reflective of not only who, what you stand for as a school board, but the model that we continue to treasure in this school district with our small community schools and being able to place a high value of that. That's indicative of some of these results as well, which are some that first came to me, Jonathan.
Yeah, yeah.
Same for me. I think Jen mentioned at one of our, when we were talking about strategic plan, and I was skeptical when she said, maybe we should not consider attendance as such a big focus. And I would say that the data here supports that. And I was skeptical. Because, you know, attendance, but it's, there's not a lot of differences in our groups across the board.
A few percentage points. I mean, even within the smaller subgroups, which are more likely to vary wildly, there were just about three or four percentage points between any of them.
Yeah, it was very small sample size, but it trended.
Right. One of the charts that was in here is the balance, Smarter Balance scores by gender. And I know, you mentioned it was English art, language arts. Do you have the same data for math? Yeah, could you provide that to us? I'm just curious if it trends similarly by gender.
Elementary and high school?
Right. That'd be great, thank you.
I would assume that it's, the boys probably do a little better, but in general, I mean, I've said this before, I think that our system is geared, girls do better in our system than boys do. And we, our discipline data kind of reflects that, the achievement data reflects that. And it's not just here, it's all over. That would be something just to continue to think about, like, what can we do to make that a little more equitable for the boys?
And keep in mind that the English language arts and the math are one measure of a snapshot of performance by gender, right? And so when we take a look at some of the graduation data here, I challenge you to ask yourself the same question. But to see that, because when you have two or more measures that indicate that, I think you've got, you've put yourself in a position of a little bit more reliability of the data.
Right. Well, you know, anecdotally, I think I mentioned at one of our other workshops, you know, I went to the senior awards night last year, my son was a senior, he happened to be there. But nonetheless, it was dominated by female students. I mean, completely down the line dominated. And the scholarships, I did some quick math, it was seven to one in terms of dollars that went to females versus male students, which I was, I thought was staggering, right? I had never really looked at that, I'd never thought about it until that particular day because it was maybe so stark that year, maybe it was an anomaly year. And I got to kind of poking around, and then I saw this chart and it kind of, it sort of reinforced that curiosity that I've had regarding this topic. I did some poking around, found some interesting articles. And I think it is something that we ought to discuss, just, I don't know how easy or hard the solutions are, whether they're even possible, but nonetheless, it's an interesting problem. I mean, most of the articles that I read sort of flatly stated, you know, from an intelligence standpoint, they're on par. And then from that point down, as you mentioned, the structure of the system tends to favor the strengths of girls, and so.
Girls like to sit and talk, boys not so much. And a lot of our classrooms are sitting.
Right. Yeah, one of the things that they called out was sort of this idea of, you know, missing assignments, for example, right? Girls are much more conscientious, generally speaking, especially at the high school age years. And, you know, more likely to either A, remember, or B, you know, even if they remember at the last minute, care enough to try to make sure they turn it in, guys like, yeah, whatever. Test scores tend to result differently. That's one of the studies that I read, boys tend to test better and do much worse on homework. And depending on how you decide to rank, those two values can sway dramatically the gender difference in the scoring of the classroom. So just interesting data.
I'm living that right now. My two daughters went through and now my son's coming through. I'm seeing it, I'm living it right now. Oh, I didn't get my homework, John.
Exactly. Right.
Or do I have one?
Do you have one homework? One homework, one homework.
Hey, Andy.
Go ahead.
All right. I'm curious, the dashboard looks like a phenomenal tool. So throughout the entire district, who has access to that dashboard?
Yeah, that's amazing.
Yeah, all administrators do, principals do, assistant principals, and specific to the building, and of course, we do here as well. I don't know if there's access by teachers.
Every teacher has access to the data on their kids.
And then, how are we, how are we teaching our educators how to use that dashboard? Do they understand how to use it to the best of its ability to extrapolate the information and get the money out of that? Because that, again, that's a phenomenal tool. Are they using that to the best of their ability?
Not today.
Okay.
How long has it been available?
It's brand new.
Okay, got it.
Oh, it's only three months new. It's got that new car smell still on there. Okay.
That's a great question.
Do we have maybe workshops and lined up for them so they can sit down and really understand what they have?
Yeah.
In front of them?
Yeah, so the PLC focus for this year, the Early Release Mondays, is all around data teams.
Okay.
So they get a little bit of, now let's look at this, and here's how you navigate it, and then let's use it to identify what do we want kids to know, how do we know if they know it, and what are we going to do if they don't. So they're looking at attendance behavior and academic performance data on each of those Early Release Mondays for each kid in their class.
Okay, thanks. Cool.
So I have a question, I've been reading, when I get spare time, you know, I've been reading, just trying to find, you know, information on equity on the internet. And a lot of it was, like in the state of Oregon, it was directed by the OEIB, did I get that name right, of that club?
Oregon Education Investment Board.
And it's now since been disbanded. And reading lots of articles about that. But one of the, one of the, that really, it was a, I think she was superintendent from Forest Grove. And her comment about that, she says, well, that happens a lot, many initiatives get started and then they get disbanded. And there was lots of discussion about why, and I got lost in the weeds trying to figure it out, and I don't think people really understood. But she said, you take the good things out of these initiatives. And one of the things she said that, and I believe, I understood this, but maybe you guys can confirm this, was that a lot of the data, like on our state report cards, is a leftover from the no child left behind. That had a lot of, a lot of detractors, but everyone loves to look at that data, and the data speaks for itself. And so that has carried on. And so I see a lot of this equity discussion where it really went off in many different directions, but it's, I think there's some good things yet to come out of it. And so even though that disbanded, that's kind of where I see this, at least, the discussion with us going, is we're gonna, we're gonna, there's, I'm getting lost. But I like where it's going, you know, things, many initiatives will get disbanded, but just like with all this data that we're seeing now, it's a leftover from no child left behind. There's some good things that are going to keep coming from the second discussion, so.
Yeah, and I would agree with that. The only other piece that I would share is, that's for Tenet Yvonne Curtis, who was from Forest Grove, and she was, that was quite telling. The other piece that she had commented on and that you hear repeatedly, it's just good supportive teaching, one student at a time. Being certain that we're not using a wide swath approach to teaching to the lowest level student in the class, being certain that our remediation, our interventions, our opportunities for students aren't just that, whatever it takes to get each student to cross the threshold of whatever the standard it is, and in your case, it's graduating from high school. And that's really what it comes down to.
I think it leads into this.
That's right. That's hard work.
Who's not graduating?
Hard work.
And now we're talking.
Now, yeah, moving on to that, you have a two-page document, two-page document that I believe ends in 2018 and dates back to 2014. I asked Jennifer to actually work with the high school and take a look at some data to come up with these numbers. This is not the kind of data that you can necessarily mine out of the Department of Education. We had to get this ourselves. We ultimately went automatically to our five-year cohort data, and again, we're backwards taking this data, saying, who were the students that, in this case, were non-completers? Because the non-completers were the students that did not graduate. Now, before Jennifer chimed in, and she'll comment a little bit more about this, I'm certain, in some cases, we're not certain we're students who actually, I mean, there are some cases where they may have gone to another state. We've even experienced students that have gone to another state and we've never even received a request for records from our school district. So that would, and that student graduated from another state, that would be a completer and a graduate, but our records wouldn't indicate that. So it does take some one-on-one attention to each one of our students. But we think it's appropriate to begin with the five-year cohort of non-completers because that's who we know with certainty did not, so, did not graduate. And so we have it broken down by a number of subgroups, and I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer and let her chime in.
Well, we've been hovering around a 90% graduation rate for many years. So the question that Andy asked me to look into is, who are the 10%-ish? Who are those kids? Who are we losing? Why? And so these numbers don't reflect 10%, and I'll tell you why. A non-completer is somebody who we either lost, trapped up, as Andy indicated, and don't know that they completed, or they didn't get anything. If a kiddo got a modified diploma, they can't... If a kiddo got a modified diploma, they count as a completer, but they don't count as a graduate. So they're not, they do now, but two years back, they did not. So those kids would be indicated at, as part of that 10% if they got a GED or a modified diploma. But they would not count as a non-completer. A non-completer means no GED, no modified diploma, no extended diploma, nothing. Okay? So this number, I mean, if you look at it in those terms, it's, it's very few kids each year that would be considered non-completers. But remember, we're talking about high school graduation. We want them to graduate from high school. So GED, or even a modified or extended diploma doesn't meet the criteria as far as ODE is concerned as a graduate. Does that make sense? Questions about who we're talking about here? Okay. So these are kids who didn't get modified diploma, extended diploma, no GED. They, as far as we know, didn't, didn't finish at all. So last year's five-year cohort, we had, you know, 22 of them out of a total of 292. And you can just, you know, look through the subgroups, I won't read them all off to you, but of course, there's a couple of things that jump out. When you go back through each kid's name, this was a depressing few days, to be honest, because we're going back through each kid's name and what happened? Where'd they go? What was going on with that kid? And there was not, Andy and I had talked about putting categories together of, is it mental health? Is it low academic skills? Was it homelessness? Was it poverty? Was it drugs? Was it expulsion? It was all of those things. There was not, there were very few kids that we could put in one box because it was a situation where, you know, there were not, there was an unstable situation at home, there were some mental health issues, kids started self-medicate, now they're using drugs and they get kicked out, now they're homeless. I mean, it's kind of that, you know, like when they start to circle the drain, they, they go fast and then we lose them. So I would say that the high school staff spent lots of hours trying to identify, and really what they came up with is a combination of things. Academic is, was, was one of them. Mental health, unstable home, drugs, and just the social emotional learning skills not being there. I mean, our system, our high school's a big system. And for a kid coming in without those skills of, you know, self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, decision-making skills, if they don't have those skills going in, it's going to be pretty tough to be successful unless somebody scoops them up. So, you know, one of the trends that we noticed was if they were in special ed and they had a case manager, if they had a 504 and had a case manager, if they were in the alt-ed program and had a case manager, if they were in ELD or migrant and had a case manager, if they had kind of the school parent to, to keep track of them and get them through, then, then they got through, for the most part, not, not all of them, obviously. But, but it was more kids that didn't have the support system anywhere and didn't have the skills to navigate the system, didn't have the resources at home to do it. So that's what they would say is, you know, the profile of, of the kids that we lost. But, yeah, I think the numbers are pretty self-evident where we have work to do. Andy got to do all the things we're doing, right? I get to do that. Right here. Yeah. So, I don't know. It's kind of, it takes a minute to digest who they are, but...
Yeah, the only, yeah, the only one that's really easy to, because there's generally 50% male and female, you can see, you can see that there's more males dropping, you know, not, not completing. But it's hard to, to know without really analyzing the data if there's, if there's specific groups that aren't being served. But they're all in the single digits and it's, it's all down to the individuals. And it's, and it's usually, like I said, two or three factors combining. So it's not...
I really appreciate Jennifer's reflection on, on what it takes from a case management or just an individual support standpoint. If you think about how we use some of our measured at $8 with dropout prevention, even things like asking our kids to come to summer school, right? And the number of kids who created credit and had, had an opportunity to, to create and even reinforce the connection to school, it's going to take a couple of years to really determine the effect of something like that. But even that, even creating that opportunity by a welcoming environment for summertime, which leave these kids an extended summer, or excuse me, school home over three months, is even an indication of some of that personal attention that they're hungry for. And while the 15 or 16 or 13-year-old may not always recognize it at that time, the reality is, it works. And that personal attention makes a difference. We have a couple of specialists now who are making home visits for students that have high absenteeism or are at high risk of dropping out. That personal attention is going to make a difference, I guarantee it.
So that, that's my question. Like, of these 22, or what was the attendance rate of those 22? I mean, you don't have to answer.
Yeah, sure. And I'm not certain that we have that. But my sense is it's...
Like, those are the ones? And, okay. And, but we have somebody that's, that's going to...
We do.
Yes. At the high school level.
At the high school level.
We have, or we started, didn't we?
They just started last, like, November.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Yeah, we were able to hire them with high school success dollars.
Right.
Formerly known as Measure 98.
So anecdotally, how's that going?
You know, I don't, it's going well from a, we care about kids and want what's best for them perspective. I don't know how it's going to play out in terms of our graduation rate because some of those kids that they're losing, they're getting into GED or YNEMA or online school so that they can finish, which is still going to count against our graduation rate, but is certainly better for those kids to have something. They would not, they would not show up on the non-completer list. But when high school, our high school stops working for those kids, it's not always fixable. I mean, when they have a junior that has seven credits, it's not fixable. So then it's, what do we, what do we look at now? How can we get them something and get them a, a good launch into life?
And there's no good way to find it. I think you already shared, but it's shared that there's really no good way to find out how many of these kids go on to complete a GED or YNEMA school or something.
Yeah, we've tracked down almost all of them.
Okay.
And they, they, if they have GED or YNEMA, they don't show, they're not on here.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood.
These are the kids that dropped out.
Okay, okay, I misunderstood.
So do you have, even just for last year, I mean, there were 22 non-completers. How many were non-graduates? In other words, how many fell into that, that other category that we're tracking?
Right, right. I want to say it was more like 38, but I'd have to look. So you can pull the list from ODE, but, and it will show you non-completer, or modified diploma, or extended diploma, or GED, or state diploma. So this list is filtered by non-completers. So we filtered out the GED, the state diploma, and the modified and extended diploma.
So ballparking, you know, that's, that's a significant number of additional, right? So 16, let's just say, pretend it was 16, went on to complete something?
Something.
And 22?
Not of these, did not.
Did not.
Correct, correct. So our graduation rate hovers right in that 90%. So whatever our class is, it's about, you know...
I'm going to split here a little bit because when you consider the five-year cohort, we're at about 91, it's usually about as high as 92% in some cases. So then if you take the class, average class of 300 students, and you get your 8% or your 9% difference, right? Do the math and you can very quickly see what very likely is that wrong number.
Right, okay.
And, but you're right. It's, when, when you consider the difference and you really drill down into the data, there's more happening here than I think what meets the eye.
Right.
Because that's what's reported by ODE.
Right.
Did you, you didn't give us attendance for disadvantaged students, did you?
Yeah, should we? Did we not?
We can surely get that if we didn't, and I was picking and choosing, but I think that's...
That would be interesting. Because that's what, this information, the non-completer, the, obviously the male and economically disadvantaged students are the ones who stick out. And, you know, like you said, we have some, perhaps some support for the economically disadvantaged group with, if they're not attending, you know, we have some, but maybe that's another, another place that we can keep in the back of our minds as far as, what can we do?
I think the, the high school in particular has made some changes in the last couple of years to, as that has kind of surfaced on the radar. You know, that probably is one of our equity issues, that the people making decisions don't have like a realistic view of what it is like to be an economically disadvantaged student, right? So it's through the eyes of an economically disadvantaged student, how challenging is it to navigate salaries in high school? So they've been looking at that the past couple of years and have made some changes. So you won't see, like, in the curriculum guide, right, they've removed, it used to be like, it's, you know, $108 to take welding or something. That's all gone. So, you know, kids should take the classes that they're interested in and keep them engaged and coming to school regardless of what they cost. So I do think, you know, there's more that we can do there in terms of making all of our things accessible to kids, like ASV card. I don't, you know, every kid should get to go to the sporting events and the dances and that, but that's not, we're not there yet, right? To do any of the extra high school stuff that makes high school special and fun, it costs money. So I know that has been, they've started to really work on that at the high school and I believe that will make a difference.
Yeah.
You're going to sound a little bit here, I've heard that from, from a few of you, but I think it's, the outcome here also needs to be, are we asking the right questions? And that example that Jennifer just shared is just that. We're beginning to ask, I think, the right questions for things like economically disadvantaged students. And some school districts have actually adopted, some boards have actually adopted a series of questions, say three to five questions that specifically get at, how will this decision affect, let's say, each one of our subgroups? Or how will it affect our economically disadvantaged students? And what does that mean? And how will we best address that to create equitable opportunity for our students? Based upon that single decision that you make as a governor.
Right.
And there's, the, the layout of our district, right, spread over 250 square miles and some remote areas, make it challenging for kids who don't have a parent at home to drive them or their own vehicle, right? If you miss a bus and you live up at Crooked Finger, or if you have to walk a mile to your bus stop and it's snowing, you know, it's, it's tougher.
I also just wanted to maybe balance the conversation a little bit because we have been talking about high school a lot because graduation happens at high school, but the road to graduation starts at, well, before kindergarten. But it definitely, you know, things that, there, there might, maybe things we can do at the younger age levels.
You can help them with the social and emotional learning when they're at the formative years.
How do you navigate a system? Yeah. And we have had lots of serious talks at K E about the need to have them ready to perform at a high school academic level when they go in. Because they don't, you know, if you have great art programs, elective programs, CTE programs, music programs, it doesn't do kids any good if they're behind academically because their electives will be math lab, core support, writing lab, not any of the good stuff.
Even to go further than that, though, like, like the discussion about boys versus girls and trying to get papers in and whatnot, I guess I see even more dramatic possible change to just make coursework way more relevant to kids and so that they want to do it, you know? And that it is, I don't know, that, I envision a, a program where kids are learning math and, and ELA while they're building a house, you know? Because they're going to really care about that. And I was pie in the sky, I know. But it's just...
Oh, we're doing a theme stem leadership academy right now.
Yeah. So that, to me, the engagement piece is, is huge. And we have to engage them all along, probably, not just in high school, but throughout. So, anyway, just a different take on things.
Good questions.
We should have started with this one because it's the bummer. And ended with all the...
Jennifer and I argue every once in a while because I'm not going to fully agree on that. You're right. It definitely, we have to choose some growth, but there's sure a lot good going on here as well.
Yeah, for sure.
And I'm the last half of the guy too.
I think it looks really...
And I see the 22 faces and it just feels bad.
Really small numbers, which is good to be talking about.
It is. It's a celebration that those are very small numbers. Unfortunately, like, each one of those numbers is somebody's lie, so...
Yeah.
It's the hardest part right now.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Food service with Steve Nielsen.
So, yeah, Andy gets to go with the good stuff. Usually, usually I get to talk about, you know, general fund, 15% reserves and doing well, all the other funds are great, but as we've discussed, mentioned on several occasions over the last few years, the lunch fund numbers, you know, continue to, continue to get worse. And so I spent quite a bit of time last week trying to put something together that would provide a lot of detail but not be pages and pages of information. So it's kind of an executive summary, but kind of a nerdy accounting version that has a lot of detail, but I think it provides a lot of good information on kind of where we're at. And I was able to do it by location. So, so just in summary, the first side I'd like you to look at would be the one that's not quite as full there. I've put a five-year history of kind of where, where we've gone financially with the lunch fund. Basically, over the last five years, we've lost an average of $65,000 per year, and it just continues to get worse each year. And, you know, it's a, basically, we're going to get into more details, obviously, but it's a combination of increased labor costs and not enough increased participation rate. And we'll get into what those numbers look like. This, this first site is really just kind of a, I call it miscellaneous stat sheet. So it shows what our meal prices are, what the ODE reimbursement rate is for our meals for free and reduced and paid meals, what each site looks like in terms of their, their free and reduced rates, what the labor profile looks like, total cost and per hour, and what the PERS rate history has been over the last five years, and also what it looks like going into the next biennium. So with that, I'd like to basically do, kind of walk you through the other side. And just, just to, to give a brief background, we have eight fully active sites in the National School Lunch Reimbursement Program that operate a full food service program, and those schools are listed in each column. Central Hall, Proud of an Evergreen, do not participate. Of course, Bethany and Community Ridge are not on here, they, they do their own, their own deal. But of our eight sites, we have about 12 FTE cooks and our food service manager. And I've sprinkled some of her time into each of the schools, so you can see what the full-time equivalency is at each school. Then what I've done is taken all the 17, 18 meals served data, first is the, is the breakfast category, and then it goes into lunch, and then we total it. So for each school, you can get a breakdown of all meals served by category for the entire year. So where I think it really starts to get helpful is, the first bolded area, you can see that, based on 171 operating days, you can see how many breakfasts, how many lunch, and how many total meals are served each day at every school. So you can see, for example, Victor Point, a school of 227 kids, only serves 12 breakfasts per day on average. Scotts Mills, 25, Silver Crest, 18, et cetera, et cetera. District-wide, we serve an average of 314 breakfasts per day. Now, with these eight locations, that's a population of 3,341 kids. So we're serving just 10% of the entire district population at those eight schools, breakfast every day. Lunches, we serve just over 1,000 lunches per day for those 3,341 kids, so 31% of our population. And you can see at the bottom there, the second to last line, you can see the percent of lunch served as a percentage of the population to each school. So it's as low as 18% at the high school and as high as 54% at Robert Frost. Now, the high school, it's a little better than that because there's, there's all the cart sales as well. And that really, we bumped that number up a little bit. cart sales as well, and that really, we bumped that number up a little bit. We also have adult sales. Really could happen at all schools, but the high school would be the one that would have the most. So it's a little bit better than that, but essentially, at a school of nearly thirteen hundred kids, we're serving three hundred meals per day. So, basically, we're serving just under fourteen hundred meals per day total, lunch and breakfast combined, for a population of thirty-three hundred students. If you were to go back on the other side, just to do a recap of what the free and reduced has been, there's a history of that as well. In the top-left corner, there's a five-year history of the county, Marion County-wide free and reduced. So on average, over the last five years, Marion County is sixty-one percent free and reduced. Silver Falls, average of forty percent.
Is that the, is that the population?
Percent that's eligible for free and reduced lunch.
Percentage that's eligible, or percentage of meals that are...
Eligible.
That are eligible, okay.
Eligible, so sixty percent of all students in Marion County are eligible for either free or reduced lunch. Silver Falls, the average is forty percent. Now, you can see that that, for this year, seventeen, eighteen, it shows forty-three point four percent for Silver Falls, but when you look at the eight schools I have highlighted down in this middle-left section, you can see by school, those eight schools average out to forty-seven point five. Now, the reason for that difference is because ODE publishes on their site every location in our district, whether they're participating in the program or not. So it includes Central Hall, which does have free and reduced, but doesn't have a lunch program and includes their meeting proud, which actually don't have any, but it includes their enrollment. So, that's why that number's lower than the eight schools we're currently serving at. So, I wanted to explain the difference, but I also wanted to say, for the eight schools that have a program, we have about forty-eight percent eligible free and reduced students. So, one thing that really jumped out at me was, we are serving, for example, if we just look at the lunches again, we're serving thirty-one point three percent of our eligible, of our enrolled population at these eight sites on a daily basis, but we have forty-eight percent that are actually eligible for free and reduced. And when you look at that thirty-one point three percent, some of those include paid lunches. So, we served almost one hundred and eighty thousand lunches last year across the district. Fifty-seven thousand of those were from people who paid the full, the full price for the lunch. So, when I did some other math, basically what I came up with was, we are, on average, only serving forty-five percent of, what, we have fifteen hundred and eighty kids eligible, we're only serving forty-five percent of that population each day. Now, it doesn't mean that we only serve forty-five percent of all the kids that are eligible, it's just being, there's actually way more that have eaten at least once, but they, you know, there's a lot of them that just start eating every day, so just on average, forty-five percent of that free and reduced population. So, that really highlights the population, the participation part of it, and that would help us greatly if that increased. The other part of it is the labor. So, you can see that, you know, our three smallest sites have basically a full-time FTE. Now, the reason that number looks kind of weird, a point nine six at those three K-8 schools, is basically, they each have a seven-hour-per-day cook, and that's like a point eight eight FTE. It's really a full-time FTE in terms of insurance. If a classified person works seven hours or more per day, they get the full insurance benefit. But I counted that as a point eight eight, plus point oh eight of management time, because we have a one-point oh district-wide manager, so that's how it got to point nine six. But basically, a full-time person. So, if we look at Victor Point again, for example, they're basically serving no breakfast, but, you know, somebody still has to go in and open the door, turn on the light, turn the oven on, be there to prep, serve, clean up, and do the same for lunch. Now, with participation not rated that well for breakfast, you could make the argument that, hey, we could have someone that's already at the school do something for breakfast and have the meal cooker, you know, maybe a four-hour day or something like that. That's a discussion we can have a little bit later here, but, so there's some things that can be done. But basically, if you look at the fact they serve twelve breakfasts, seventy-eight lunches, ninety meals for the whole day, the formula that Savannah and John from Sodexo have talked about, that they talk about in their industry, is that you need to have about thirty meals served per one hour of labor. Well, we have seven-plus hours, seven hours of cooked labor at that location with only ninety meals being served. We really need another hundred and twenty meals being served at that location that we'd be able, you know, theoretically, you know, break even. So when you break down our total food costs, down towards about two-thirds of the way down, there's the total Sodexo cost, which takes into account the cost of breakfast and lunch. So in seventeen, eighteen, we were being charged two dollars and twenty cents per meal served. But for breakfast, three breakfasts equals a meal, so that's where you see up top there the point, the seventy-three cents per breakfast served, two-twenty per lunch. So you can see how, what the total Sodexo cost, which covers the cost of food, management and compliance, two dollars and twenty cents per meal, and that foots out to four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars over on the right. Then, our labor cost is added in there. Now, if you go to the backside once again, you'll see what a, what our labor profile looks like on the bottom left. So, this is average. So, average hourly rate's about fourteen-fifty per hour. Most cooks work a hundred and eighty days per year, seven hours per day. We have a couple that work eight hours per day, one at the high school. We do have a few part-timers, that's how some of the FTEs get a little weird on the other side as well. For someone that, that, the, so the taxes in the PERS, and the PERS rate's based on a profile of someone that, we do have some tier one, tier two, and we do have some op-serve, and those rates are different, so it's a blended average. And then what the insurance cost for the whole year. You can see that the average cost of a cook is just over forty-two thousand dollars, and you can see what the per-hour breakdown is in that other column there. So you see that the insurance actually costs fourteen dollars and twenty-nine cents per hour as well. So the total cost per hour is about thirty-three, thirty-four dollars. Now, there are a few, we do have a few employees that either are part-time and just take dental and vision, and we also have one that waves, but we don't, we can't control that. So the average is actually less than what that insurance would be, but that would be the cost for the people that are full-time and pick the insurance. Also, to the right, before we flip back to the other side, is the PERS rate history. And we didn't get a chance to talk about this at the last board meeting. The PERS Board, actually, on their October fourth, the fifth board meeting, they did, as expected, adopt the new rates for the nineteen-twenty-one biennium. And so, you can see that our nineteen-twenty-one rates are in there, and they're going up by about four, about four percentage points. I do have a number, that's about twenty-eight percent increase in cost just on, just on the PERS alone, starting July first, two thousand and nineteen. So, if we go back to the other side, the labor basically for each location has been plugged in based on that FTE and the average cost. And then the revenue basically includes the local sales, so the people that are paying for their lunches. It also includes our federal and state reimbursement. So, again, just to get a feel for that, I apologize, but have you go back to the other side. Over in the right-middle section, you can see what our district meal prices were last year, and by grade level, breakfast and lunch, and then what the ODE reimbursement rates are. And these are actually the federal reimbursement rates. So, you can see a paid, we actually do get a little reimbursement even for a paid breakfast and lunch, and then what the free breakfast and free lunches. Now, about three years ago, the state actually started making up the difference between that, you can see for breakfast, for example, we get two dollars and nine cents back from the federal government through ODE for every free breakfast that we serve, and one seventy-nine back for a reduced breakfast. A few years ago, the state started supplementing that difference of thirty cents, so that we do, to make all breakfasts and lunches basically free for reduced-priced kids. So we get thirty additional cents for a breakfast and forty additional cents for lunch from the state. So essentially, we're getting, we're getting that two oh nine and three twenty-five for both free and reduced, essentially. I just go with the federal reimbursement rates were there. But on that revenue line item on the other side, essentially, for each site, all the local sales, paid lunches, the federal and the state reimbursement is calculated in there based on the meals served over the course of the whole year, which then gives you a true kind of profit, profit or loss, which in this case, every site's coming in at a loss at every location. Now, there is a little additional revenue that's not, that does get distributed amongst the site. Savannah's done a great job of getting as far as the school grants, and we also have a required state school fund match amount of about eight thousand dollars that goes into the lunch fund, that helps the lunch fund a little bit. I tried to keep this pretty much a analysis of operations of the National School Lunch Reimbursement Program, breakfast and lunch. This does not include our special milk sites, which we do have special, we have milk sales at the sites that don't have the lunch. And we also have the after-school supper program, and that is not being taken into account here, or the summer program. Those have actually both all been operating at a, at least a close to break-even, and really, this is kind of what we needed to look at. The meat, potatoes, no pun intended, what's going on. So, if you look at it, kind of brass tacks towards the bottom, and thank you for hanging in there with me, the cost per meal for Sodexo is an average of a dollar eighty-six district-wide. The average cost of labor per meal is two dollars and three cents, so the average total cost per meal is three dollars and eighty-nine cents. We're only bringing in, I believe it was three dollars and twenty-four cents per meal on average in revenue. So, losing about sixty-four, sixty-five cents per meal last year. And that's kind of how you get to where we are, as far as, as far as that goes. And the very bottom line, I think, was helpful as well. It kind of tells, it shows how many meals are being served per day, per FTE at each site. And, you know, we kind of talked about that formula for number of meals that needed to be served per hour. But honestly, I think this is, this is what, this is the kind of information we need to break this down and be able to look at, you know, where some of the, you know, we kind of, we kind of know generally what the problems are, but to see it by site really, I think, kind of helps too, you know. So, that's what I was trying to do with this, and I know it's a lot of data, but...
It's a lot of data.
Can you guys remind me what the amount of uncollected monies was? It wasn't anywhere near our losses, right? But I just can't remember what that number was.
It was, for this square that just ended, it was just over five thousand dollars.
So, you know, we had a loss of over a hundred thousand, so it's, I don't want to say irrelevant, but kind of...
Every little bit adds up, and we had a, in December this year, we had a, like a four thousand and some odd dollar adjustment that ODE made to collect back from previous year, some yield count data. I think it was actually a problem with their database and how they reimbursed us a month from the previous year, so that's, that was another negative adjustment. You know, the fees for, this doesn't even include, this shows this negative one twenty-five here, we're actually, we're closer to what, losing one thirty-five, I think it was. This doesn't include, you know, we have costs for, so we do have the ins and outs of the after-school supper this summer, and that's kind of, you know, we have money coming in, money going out. But we do have inspections at every school site for the county every year, so those are fees, you know, we don't give reimbursement for that. And we do have some miscellaneous supplies and things, and equipment repair that come into play as well. And that's, that's just kind of, you know, some years are, I guess, worse than others on that. So, but those are just some other things that are, you know, included in here. So anyway, so, I don't know if you wanna...
Yeah, I'll chime in just a little bit, so that, there's lots of variables at play here, but the two that are playing in my mind the most are participation of students. And our principals do, I think, a very good job of encouraging participation, but we surely can't force the hand to fill out the application. But increased participation would assist. And I believe it's, well, I believe it's important for you to take at, a look at as we drill down to the actual cost, to really take a look at your operational costs. And that's not a new subject for us, and operational costs, meaning your labor. We used to, we used to maintain the food service system independently. We currently have a contractor for management services, and while I firmly stand behind that decision and believe it was in the best interest of our district from a compliance and efficiency and operational standpoint, the reality is, you still own all your labor, and nobody wants to see an adjustment to that, and a lot of school boards and school districts have to struggle with that, about how they do it. In fact, I can't say with certainty, but if I had to wager, I'd say the majority of food service programs in the state of Oregon operate in RED. They sustain it somehow. They surely focus on participation, that's something that, of course, we can do a better job with that, but that also has to flow a little bit with the economy. The economy is good right now, and even kids or parents who qualify for free and reduced may, for whatever reason, consider other options. Jonathan and I have had some recent conversations about food service, what that means, and I think Sodexo has done a great job of helping us improve within the federal requirements, the food quality that we have, and the choices that we have, and the variety that we have. So frankly, I can tell you that generally speaking, we're offering the best product and the best food and the best value that we can provide under the law. It's not the mac and cheese and fried chicken that we all experienced thirty or forty years ago. But nonetheless, we're definitely meaning that. The reality is also, this is, the last of a couple of variables, is you have a very large geographic school district with a lot of small schools. And the beauty of that is, that's what our community and our school district loves. The reality of that, when you're trying to operate a food and service program, it creates its own challenges that are difficult. And the final one being the variable that's generally out of our control, and that's, that's related to PERS. PERS has gone up, in fact, it's gonna be in my next update to you. The anticipated hit based upon current service level next year is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this school district. That's big.
In addition?
In addition.
General fund impact for you, starting this session.
So, again, lots of conversation will happen, the budget committee level as well, about, you know, why we have focused so much effort on our fund balance and what that means, because it's going to come into play at some point soon, and that's the voice of experience. We know that happens. The economy will downturn at some point, and we'll be in a tough position. So when you, when you're thinking about those variables, again, what you're willing to spend in RED to help sustain a food service program, what that looks like in order to maintain your incredible employees at the service level that you're currently providing, it's gonna be a hard conversation.
Yeah, looks like it. Can you speak to anything on the, the revenue has kind of trended down, and our population has, is there a lower, are people just, are less students over time choosing to take lunch? That data isn't here, and the only thing I could find over time was in, was in the...
Yeah, went up from fifteen, sixteen to sixteen, seventeen, but then it came back down a little bit last year, and it seemed like we really kind of tailed off at the, at the end of last year, seemed like the last few months, and, you know, it's kind of hard to, kind of hard to predict how that's gonna go.
Right.
Some of that could do with weather and all that, but yes, we did, we did trend down last year.
You know, trying to get, you know, people are choosing to pack a sack lunch. I mean, over time, that's, that's what our kids chose to, Scotts Mills, they just, more and more higher percentage, they just prefer to just sack lunch.
Yeah, we're serving fifty-eight lunches per day.
Yeah, and I know that everyone's doing the best job they can with the, with the funds that are, because it's, because, you know, the factor is, is what the, what the matching.
And, you know, like, so the labor is what it is, and obviously, there could be some adjustments there. We could even look at basically, you know, the provider doing that.
Well, yeah, I mean, that was, that trend happened before the provider, before, you know, that's been going on before Sodexo.
The labor, so, you know, for this year, for example, I mean, just think if we had increased, you know, if the participation rate was, you know, ten percent higher across the board, I mean, that labor's already there, it's not going up. You know, it is that number. So, you know, we'd be taking, we'd be charged two dollars and twenty cents per meal, and, you know, bringing in three twenty-five, so, you know, every meal above where we hit last year would have been a dollar twenty-five helping us, you know.
Yeah.
We really, we really need to, you know, get that, get that number up to, you know, nice to see that thirty-one percent, you know, lunch served up to at least forty.
You know what's interesting about our food program is, you know, the way I look at this is, you're running an independent business within the public school system.
Yeah.
If this was my business, if I'm losing clients, there's a reason I'm losing clients.
Yeah.
And it, it's not an accounting issue, it's the most basic issue, the quality of the food. Granted, I'm sure we're, we're offering some of the best quality based on dollars and cents, but if the kids aren't participating, they probably just don't like the food.
Well, and it's not just if the kids like it. Actually, we had a great chat, Sue Ann and Andy had an idea, well, a month ago or something like that. And one of the issues that I think has been plaguing the system, and I think it, it could turn around, it looks like it's trying to, is there's a perception among the parents, it's not just if the kids like the food, it's if the parents think the food is appropriate. And so we, I think there's two sets of issues.
Well, sure, perception is, is, oftentimes, perception is reality, but how do you get the parents back on board?
Exactly.
Serve a better product.
Well, and then even then, it's going to, there's a.
You know, exactly, yeah.
Have a parent day for food.
Seriously, but, I mean, there's got to be something to where, you know, it's not more, it's not an accounting issue. And if it comes down to asking the hard questions regarding personnel, budget cuts, I got to watch how I say that, but I'm just, as far as forward-thinking, I'm looking for the path of least resistance. How can you save what we have right now by increasing the, the participation rate? I think that's more of a question too for Sedexo. What can we do to maybe take a look at the food that's served, take a look at the quality, how does it taste? Heck, get a student panel, what are they looking for? And making sure, does it qualify within the guidelines of what we're serving our children? But it doesn't seem like it's that difficult. I think we can look at the food too as being a major culprit, in my opinion.
I think it's complicated.
It's complicated. I, I think you could, I think there's people that would pay more for the, they would, they would pay more, but the feds only match. And so you can only, the free and reduce, you know, if you raise the price of a lunch, a dollar, and the food is, you have a dollar more to spend, you know, there's going to be more choice, a lot of people would prefer it. But the, but the OD is, is only going to give us three twenty-five, and so it has to come, they're only going to give us so much. And so that's, that is a constraint in fact.
And the significant majority of our participation are those who are covered by that reimbursement rate, not by what we necessarily charge.
Is that, is that, yeah, about half, is it?
It's over half.
Or is it over?
Well, yeah, well, the lunches, the lunches we serve, a hundred, so a hundred and what, a hundred and twenty-three thousand of our hundred and seventy-nine thousand lunches were free and reduced.
Free, okay, yeah.
Served free and reduced.
Right, so, so that, a significant, right, correct, so, yeah, that, that's, that's the constraint factor, I think it is. So you got to provide your lunch for three and a quarter.
Sure, well, you say it's complicated, this is complicated, right? But we have an amazing tool. This is food.
Yeah.
Well, it's good you're going to eat, if it's not good, you're not going to eat. So what can we do to improve the food, improve the quality, to bring the kids back in? They're the customers, right? We've got the, we've got the structure, we know what the hard line is, we can still make it work within the black and white. Let's find a way to do it.
Well, I think, I think this is a complicated part of it, is that that's, that's the Sedexo part of the job, right? I mean, it's like, that's not us, that's not the school district. I mean, I don't know where the, where the lines are drawn there, but if we were operating our own food service program, it would all be on us. But there's a complication because we contract for that. So to me, that's, that's a complication.
Sure, but they're, and we're the client. Of course, they need to acquiesce to what we're looking for. So we hired them for a specific reason, and if we're falling short, what are we doing? Just like anything else here, if we're falling short on any category, we're always having to go back and take a look, where can we improve? Food is no different, right? It's no different.
I don't think anybody will argue that point, Ron. I, I think, you know, attractiveness is going to make it a difference. The, the interesting complexity here are the compliance requirements that we have related to food service. We're even capped on how much we can charge for, for meals within a certain range.
Sure.
Right, based upon the nutritional value that we're provided. And I think we all know that, that, you know, each one of us, our families or even us, can serve a pretty good meal that's going to make a lot of people happy at Thanksgiving or whatever it is. And, well, I think we can, we can truly push Sedexo to, and challenge them to do that. I think we have some ownership as well in partnering with them and getting that increased participation within the means that we can provide.
So what are those?
Those means are, well, there's, there, we are about to go through a food service audit, our next one, and the volume of documents that we have to go through. Thank goodness for Sedexo, because that alone is an incredible feat, just getting all those variables in check, whether it be portion sizes, all of the nutrition pieces, the maximum, minimum things, the temperature of food, all the health requirements, all of those pieces that just have to fall in line. We even have a procurement audit this year of our food service program as well, which we've never had in the past. So there are so many compliance requirements, again, I'm not being so critical of it, even though it'd be great to have a few fewer, but they really do require some technical ability that, I'll make fair comparisons, similar to what we do with our buses. We, this is a specialty that is very difficult for us to manage internally.
And we, and we have to drop an RFP this year, so.
A what?
RFP.
RFP.
But, but, but it is interesting, the compliance is a full-time job, and they are federal dollars. We, we don't have, we don't have to do as much on the transportation side because it's just part of the state school fund. So, you know, and it's, it's a larger expense for our district, the transportation, but anyway.
So, but are there levers, more levers that we can press in order to increase participation on our side, not necessarily the Sedexo side?
Well, I hate to short enter, yes. You know, I think, well, there's always something more creative to do. Who is it, the suggested parent for lunch day or whatever, what a clever idea. And maybe that's been tried before, so the, so the ants here are listening and taking all this in. So what a great opportunity for her as well. But yeah, I'm certain there are other opportunities for us.
I'm going to say, so, first of all, tomorrow is the first meeting of the district-wide wellness committee. It's a community committee that covers all sorts of wellness topics for staff and students, and one of those is our food service program. And so we're just getting started tomorrow, and that'll be one of the things that we talk about is feeding children and getting them to recognize the importance of eating. Initially, Community Roots is newest to our food service program, and prior to their contract with Sedexo for this year, they had been contracting with. Fresh and local, and so they moved away from that, and their lunch counts are.
Their highest lunch count last year was thirty a day, and now we're up to seventy-five a day.
It's much less expensive. My kids, my kids are eating. So, I mean, I, they're enjoying the food.
Yeah, it's the same food we serve, we're serving.
Yeah, they're, they're eating the same things that the other sites are participating, so. My son likes it better. Chicken necks.
One question that I've got, Steve, is this, if you ran through a hypothetical on your analysis, for example, how big of an impact is breakfast? Let's say, I want to start by saying I get the reason we serve breakfast, but if we didn't, would we break even or are we still weighed in the red? I mean, those kind of hypotheticals would help us understand some of the options on the table and what impact they would have.
Yeah, I'd have to break it down a little bit more, I'd have to, you know, break down that labor, you know, to whatever they spend on, it's two dollars, whatever, kind of break that labor. Partial out, which I didn't, I didn't.
Which is fair. It seems like that's, that could be important. It seems like it's something that I would want to at least understand. Obviously, you know, if you look at our dials, we've got increased participation, or reduced services, or increased cost, you know, what we charge students. I mean, we've only got a handful of dials, obviously, that we can turn.
Yeah, yeah.
Or, you know, or status quo, if we lose a hundred thousand dollars a year and like it, and, you know.
Well, and that's the thing, it's kind of like, you know, you look at, you know, transportation, we spend just, just over two million dollars a year. But we get seventy percent technically reimbursed through the state school fund, our state school fund revenue. So, you know, we're paying six hundred thousand dollars a year in that, you know, to, to transport our kids. You know, is it, maybe we pay a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to feed? It's important, I mean, just because we can fund and serve twelve breakfasts, I hate to say, I don't want to serve breakfast to those twelve kids. I mean, but in the same token, is there another model for dinner? Yeah, yeah, I think there may, there probably is.
So Victor, there are the three schools that don't have.
South Ohio, Southern Union.
But they have milk?
Yes, and.
Definitely it's just milk.
And then Community Roots is now with the Sedexo, starting this year.
Yeah, and one thing I wonder about is, is, you know, the sack lunch option.
Yeah.
It's just something running through my head. I don't know the complexities of it, but.
Yeah.
Now, you want to be fair, I'm saying that, and you remember when we made a segue from having our own in-house food program to make it a segue to Sedexo? I think that first year that we did have Sedexo, our loss was, the amount of loss was substantially less compared to our own in-house program, if I'm ever correct. So, and of course, we do the reporting, we account, everything that we need to function, so I do want to be fair about that.
Right.
And like, take Jonathan May's comment, is it one of those things where we just have to accept it and move on? And because we don't know, maybe the cost, maybe the loss would have been much higher.
If we kept our own in-house program compared to Sedexo too, so.
Right.
I do want to be fair about that.
That's a good point.
And the one thing, I'm not arguing either way, you know, for what our method is, one thing Sedexo has no control over is our labor agreement. So for example, insurance went ninety dollars a month for every employee this year, and that has nothing to do with them. But also, Andy, I think had some history that even before I was here, in terms of, back in the day when we were building a positive balance, what the labor, not cost per FTE, but total FTE was like prior to even as we were shifting to Sedexo, but even some pre-Sedexo where we added some staff, and I don't know all the details of that, what it looked like then versus.
Yeah, there was some pretty significant reductions, and, and the model at that time was a leaner, leaner labor, labor model, which ultimately resulted in more prepackaged foods, and guess what happened to the participation? And so, so there's a fine balance here.
That's when my kids started dropping off, I think.
Well, and I think that's the perception problem that we still have to rebound from, I think.
Well, it's perception, I mean, I can only speak for my kids, but they run a pretty high motor. And we started noticing, especially in one of our chi, one of our children, that when they ate the prepackaged meals at school, she came home a wreck. And we started sending, you know, and as she would eat the brown bags, you know, I think she, I think the food just digested slower, it just, you know, just the brown bit. For this child, for our children, it seems to, they seem to do better on, on home food. I think there's just, you know, but you got to save costs, we don't, you know, it's, you know, we're bounded in. I'm not, I'm not saying this, this is a tough spot, this, this is a great bunch of data, it's all there. I mean, thanks for the work, that was a lot of work on that.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Leads to a lot of questions.
So you are, you are wrapping up your final year, your, your contract with Sedexo, and I'm certain they're interested in continuing the relationship with us, but we are required by law to publish a request for proposals, which we will be doing by mid-year. And so that'll be, I think, a natural opportunity for us to continue this conversation and also say, what does that look like? Even when we publish the RFP, we can ask for the responses to include various variables. As an example, what would it look like if, if labor were provided by the contract? What would it look like if we varied the model, and what would it look like without breakfast? And so there could be some, some different variables we would be sure to consider at that time and be part of the selection process.
Cool, okay.
Steve, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it's a difficult one. Okay, all right, well, that's it for the regular session, so now, for now, we're going to adjourn to executive session under ORS 192-6602D to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations, and ORS 192-6602H to consult with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. All right, thanks for attending. Okay, let's return to regular session, and we have one action item. Do I have a motion for approval of the memorandum of understanding regarding dues deductions with the Silver Falls Education Association?
I move that we approve said memorandum.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion of a second, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, very good, anybody have any further business?
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask you one more time. Tomorrow night is the regional meeting sponsored by OSBA, the LAMAD EST. I know we've sent out a couple of notices and haven't heard any response, surely no pressure on my part, but it is a regional meeting to update you as board members. If any of you are interested, this is the dinner that comes with it, I believe it begins at five or five-thirty tomorrow night.
Okay.
And Debbie, we just need the RSVP on your behalf, so.
Okay.
There you go, let her know tonight, if, if it's all silent, then I know what ends.
All right, that's, okay.
That's in Albany?
It's in Salem.
Oh, Salem.
Yeah, way too busy, so, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, all right, any further business? Okay, seeing none, meeting adjourned.